Here.
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 Mr. Shaughnessy?
Here.
It's Shear?
Here.
Mr. Spicer?
Here.
Okay, rise for the flag, please.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
I would like to forward to know that Kathy Collins is a guest. We are going to certify her as a winning one of the seats for starting July 1st. And an opportunity to get to know her before to be introduced to her before she's sworn in as a board member on July 1st. So welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Collins.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got our executive session. We have two resolutions coming out of executive session. B O E 79.
It resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Louis Paddock Esquire as the hearing officer pursuant to Section 75 of the New York State Civil Service Law with respect to employee number 62020A, and authorizes the hearing officer to hear evidence, make a transcript of proceedings, and to issue a written report of her findings, or his findings, I guess, of fact and recommendations, including a disciplinary penalty if any. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends employee number 62020A with pay commencing on June 20th, 2020, during the pendency of the Section 75 hearing during the months and days of the employee's paid work year. May I have a motion for this resolution? Or I guess I'll move it. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, say nay. Abstentions? No, so unanimously approved. B O E 80. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Louis Paddock Esquire as the hearing officer pursuant to a hearing to be held pursuant to New York State Education Law, Section 2509, Para N4, with respect to employee number 62020B, and authorizes the hearing officer to hear evidence, make a transcript of proceedings, and to issue a written report of his findings of fact and recommendations, including a disciplinary penalty if any. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends employee number 62020B with pay commencing on June 20th, 2020, during the pendency of the New York State Education Law, 2509, Para N4, hearing during the months and days of the employee's paid work year. Will I make that motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Abstentions? unanimously approved. Okay. The first item on the agenda is Resolution B 74, Election and Budget Vote Results. Shall I read this? So I'll just read that. Be it resolved that the Board of Education declares the results of the canvas to be as follows. Kathy Collins, 4,651 votes. Priscilla Lau, 4,672 votes. And Norris Shear, 4,829 votes. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Kingston, New York, hereby or declare elected for three-year terms effective July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023, Kathy Collins, Priscilla Lau, and Norris Shear. Be it further resolved that after 5:00 PM on June 16th, 2020, the election inspectors proceeded to canvass the vote on the budget proposition and made the following determination. Proposition 1, 2020-21 Budget. Shall the Board of Education of the Kingston City School District, Alster County, New York, be authorized to spend the sums of money which will be required for school district purposes for the 2021 school year in the total amount of $187,420,130, and to levy the necessary sum against taxable real estate, taxable real property in the school districts. Votes in favor of Proposition Number 1, 4,278. Votes against Proposition 1, 1,690. Be it further resolved that the district clerk shall record the results of said election as hereby announced and declared. So I'll move that resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
One item. Were there any write-in votes for board members?
Four pages.
Four pages.
And Donald Trump and Mickey Mouse were two of them.
I'm glad they weren't elected.
There were two people who got 11 votes.
Two people got 11 votes?
Yep.
Well, I would like, can we make a comment?
Yes.
Are we in the discussion point? I would just like to thank the community for supporting the budget. I think it's really, I'm pleased that our turnout was relatively higher, I suppose, and just really pleased that the budget was supported and want to welcome Kathy and congratulate our sitting board members on their reelection.
Thank you.
Any others? I'll agree with that discussion. I think you said it well, Dr. Shikovowitz. So any other comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay. Abstentions? unanimously adopted. Two more minutes. May I have a motion to approve the resolutions, the minutes of...
Still moved.
June 1st, 2020. So moved. A second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who did first?
Suzanne DeNora.
DeNora, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any corrections or comments or additions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay. Abstentions? Okay, unanimously approved. Now we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Pedelino.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. I'm going to actually, so part of the superintendent's report, as everyone knows, we usually on this meeting honor our tenured teachers and welcome our tenured teachers, I should say, and honor our retirees. So tonight, we want to take this opportunity to at least honor our retirees and hope to have an opportunity in September to, you know, welcome and honor our tenure award winners who will be here. So we want to do this first. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Siri for a quick minute, who's going to show us a video honoring our retirees.
Karen, you said they won't be able to see it?
They will be able to see it up on the screen.
On the screen, but...
Not on their screen, so sorry.
We have it in our agenda, so we can look at it.
But it's more fun from here, so sorry about that.
I'm sure that's true. I'm sure that's...
...
Don't kick us out of the meeting here.
Okay.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from board members?
I would like to wish all of the retirees a very happy and healthy, long retirement. I hope they get to go everywhere they wanted to go and spend a lot of time with their friends and families.
Yes, I would like to also say congratulations to the retirees. Some of them have been with us for a very long time, and I've worked with many of them. Congratulations and healthy and happy future.
Next. Okay, I would like to congratulate all of them on their retirement. Thank them for their years of service to the district and especially their care for the students that have been in their classrooms and in their buildings, and wish them a long and happy retirement.
Can I give a retirement message from a retiree?
Sure.
Most of us in education, we just don't want to go. We love it so much, we don't want to go. So my message to all of you retirees is, whether you want it to go or not, you're going to love it. You are going to love it. So take a breath and enjoy this new stage in your life.
Okay, anyone else?
I just want to thank them all for the love and care they've given to the students and also to the communities that they worked in. You know, all the schools are like little communities, and it's not just leaving your job, it's leaving your community. And so I hope that wherever they land, they enjoy the freedom that they have now once the pandemic is over. I think it's a bittersweet ending, but it's certainly unique, and it's probably given them a lot of time to reflect on their career. Again, I echo all of your wishes. The most important being good health.
And again, I would certainly like to give congratulations to them. They've given so many years to our school district and to our students, and that's to be appreciated, and we just wish them the best.
Next. I don't think everyone has spoken, but...
Well, okay, so I'll chime in. I'm not sure that I have much to add, except that I always wish everybody very quiet mornings with their cup of coffee. Happy retirement and happy on to this next stage of life. And very much thank you for all the work and dedication that you've given to your school communities and your kids over these past many, many years.
Thank you. Okay.
And thank you to Karen and Kristen for putting that together, working to make that special for our retirees. And like I said, in September, we will have a live meeting where we'll invite our tenure award winners to come in and be recognized. So next on the superintendent's report, we have the KHS Second Century and Capital Project update, which is in your packet.
Just one question. So with this retirement recognition, will that be on the official website?
It will be on the website, yep.
If anyone wants to look at it again.
It'll be on as of Monday morning.
Okay, Monday morning. I'm sorry, Duncan.
That's okay. So Karen, are you going to drive for me?
I'm going to drive. Go ahead.
Okay. So just starting out with our Second Century Capital Plan, our main phase two. These are the most recent updates. Obviously, you know, the east wing is done, the west wing, where we started our abatement, and the demo beginning in the music wing, a lot of demo going on over there. Finishes are going on of the ground floor, especially, you'll see pictures, like this wall padding, epoxy flooring, bathroom fixtures, doors and hardware. Wall padding is actually in our new adaptive PE gym. You'll see a picture of that in a minute. Elevator shaft abatement is beginning at the end of this week, so it actually began this week, began today. That is the elevator, the elevator in the tunnel between main and the new wing. Yeah, I don't know exactly what I'm talking about, but there's that, there is that, it used to be the top of the stairs where you went into MJM. So that is being replaced, but first we had to abate it. Site work, you know, and with stairwells work on the east side, so all those old crumbling stairs have been jackhammered out, and you'll see that also. Togan Wiston, abatement continues. So we're going to keep going with the abatement, and the interior demo in Wiston is also beginning. You'll see some of that in a couple of our pictures. First three things, you can tell they're already complete, so then our completion dates are pretty much the same as the last time we spoke. Ground floor east is now, it's done. The Togan Wiston demo for the fall. Music wing for the, sorry, for the spring, and first and second floor west will be completed in the spring as well. So now we've gone to the pictures. That's a music wing demo that's going on. It's kind of crazy over there. This is Mr. DeSeaco's old office. It's hard to believe. That suite there. There's where the vice principal was for a while, over in that same suite that's being demoed. This is the guidance office for most of the year, and one of the things, I think, you know, there's a lot of people are sad about certain things that are going on. I'm mostly sad about that floor, because if you remember, every walking into that floor, it was golden, maroon, checkered tiles, and I thought those were great, but they're going and they're asbestos, so we're not going to be keeping those around. This is the new adaptive PE room downstairs at Kingston High School. So there's the wall padding and the new floor padding is going in there. Bathrooms. You see, you got the fixtures are in most of the bathrooms now. They're actually, we're well past that. They're putting up the dividers now. Wiston demo, the window removals, so you see they're really moving along as far as the kind of demolition from the inside out. More Wiston interior demo. Outside, so you see the crumbling stairs. Surprised how much rubble comes when they take those stairs down. So those stairs are actually the pouring and the fittings for the pilings, they have to go in there. I think it went in today, so those pictures are a little bit older. And that's it for the Kingston High School project. But I also want to share with you some of the things that are going on at Miller Middle School and JFK, as well as Edson. So just have a quick, few pictures and a few slides on that. Okay. So this is started a little ahead of schedule because of the closures. The only positive thing we can say about the closures would be that we got a little bit ahead. These are things that are going on right now. The auditorium has been abated. You'll see a picture of that. It looks really interesting. The demolition is pretty much over. It says it's underway, but it's pretty much over. We're getting ready to prep the floor and put in all the things that we need to put in to get those chairs in, concrete, oh, I'm sorry, the infill at the auditorium, those kind of things that go under to make sure we can bring in our new equipment, our new seats and such. Outside, we had a lot of concern about the curbs. We've talked about this a lot, and the bus turnaround side, those have been installed. Sidewalks replaced. We start on the baseball field parking lot, which is one of my pet peeves, how that was, that needed to get that done. So we've got that, that was being done now. So a little bit ahead, actually, we said prep next week. They've prepped it this week. You know, new panel board for the auditorium, that's electricity, and the new emergency lights are being installed. JFK, Mr. Verge went over to JFK the other day. He came back and told me it looked like, a little bit like a war zone. You'll see some pictures. There's a lot going on outside at JFK. A lot of site demo going on, inside and out. Installation of new drainage, new curbs, new sidewalk. The elevator foundation is being put in, and if you remember, when you look at the picture, you'll probably feel like you're looking back in time, because they look very similar to when we were putting the elevator in here at Mahar. It's, you know, the process, that was the same. New ductwork and then also emergency lights being installed. Edson, just a few things going on. As you know, we got a little ahead of the game, so we were able to get some things done at Edson. Abatement and demolition is complete. The wall demo is complete, and new boiler delivery is coming on the 25th, which is next week. And then we got the louvers and the breeching, which is the exhaust piece that goes out, that takes the, that goes out in the boilers, is being put together. So we're in really good shape at Edson, moving along very quickly. So there's that elevator that I told you about. If you remember, it looks a lot like what we saw here about a year and a half ago or so when we were looking at this. New sidewalks. So there's all the demo there. The stairs are all gone. It's kind of, it looks like a mess, but it's going to be great when it's done. So you see the Edson boiler room now, empty, just waiting for the new boilers. More of the Edson boiler room. You know, those big slabs where the boilers used to be, so you know how the size that they are, they were. And when you see the new ones, they're not, they're much smaller, much more efficient. That's the auditorium. I thought these were interesting pictures. That's all the chairs are gone, all the tiles up. If you look at the one on your right, not the one with the machine, which is kind of a cool machine, but if you're looking already, so you're looking at the stage, so you see that's, it's kind of interesting to look and kind of see that picture without any of the, those really great orange chairs that were in there. That's where the new control box is going. And that is it. Does anyone have any questions?
Dr. Pedelino, I am a strange board member. Boilers, exciting. I don't know if you can answer this question, but with us installing new boilers in 2020, do you have any idea how long the new ones will last?
You know, I don't off the top of my head. I do know, you know, I was really, I usually focus on the efficiency and with how much money they're going to save us, so I don't really, I don't know how long they last. I know, you know, but I could find that out. I can get a life expectancy from our people and get that back to you.
Just curiosity from your boiler board member.
I have a question. This is Lau. I can't remember. What kind of flooring is going on in the auditorium at Miller?
It's going to be tile flooring with carpeting down the aisles.
Okay. I know, it used to be carpet, which was a disaster.
Yeah, yeah, we have carpet down the aisles and tile flooring.
The carpeting was only down the aisle, though. It's going in the same as it was, so it doesn't affect the acoustics of the room.
Right, and it's not, and they, I think they expanded that carpet kind of out.
That room had good decent acoustics. It's a clamshell. And in the back, if you switch your head in the center, you'll actually physically flip the side of the band or chorus. It's a well-designed auditorium, so nothing's changed, I don't think.
I thought they were going to try to even enhance the acoustics, though a little bit.
They are.
They are. It's a wall treatment, similar, well, it's not similar to one at the high school, but the same concept.
Yeah, it's the same idea. It's not as extensive as what we did at Kingston High School, but it is same concept, trying to improve the acoustics, although that, Mr. Lamb is right, that room does have, it's pretty well designed on a tournament for its time. Okay.
It seems hard to believe that it was a year and a half ago that they were putting in the elevator here, that we've been here for a year already.
Forgot what it was like to be at Seoni. And next in the superintendent's report, just some quick, and it says closer updates, but it really is just more updates, I guess. Just to say, I do want to thank everyone who's involved in the senior send-off and thank the board members who were there. Great day, great job by the Kingston High School administration and the senior class vice assistant principal, Ms. Skorka. And I know it was a whole team effort. They spent a lot of time planning and getting their things together. It was great. It was a lot of fun. I think everyone who's there got a sunburn, but they enjoyed it and had a good time. It was really a nice way to go, and I think the kids, I've had nothing but positive emails and conversations with people about what was going on, so really great day, and I'm glad the students deserved it. Just a reminder, virtual graduation is the 26th. Now, that's not the, that's not the graduation. But that is what we're doing for the 26th. We didn't want that date to go past and just ignore it. So we're doing the virtual graduation. That's being completed now, and I thank Ms. Bonville for kind of pushing that project along as well. Last night was our virtual senior awards night. It's on our website. You can click on it and watch. It went, you know, really well. Obviously, it was a very, it wasn't our usual awards night, and that's unfortunate, but it went well, and I think it's ironic, the first year we don't have, that we have air conditioning in the auditorium was the year that we don't have the event there. It's previous seven, we were very warm. So that's, so, you know, a lot of things going on, and things are going really well. I mean, I think you've seen a lot of things on the website, so we're happy with kind of the efforts, and really the reaction from our students has been great, so we're very pleased. Just a couple other small things. Monday, I've been asked by the New York State Council of Small City Schools to represent them on the state reopening committee, so Monday morning, that's what I'll be doing. So I'll be able to come back and share information with both my, you know, our administration and the board as well, see what the state's thinking about. That's a big piece to be able to know what they're doing. We don't want to work and then come back and find out the state has different guidelines for us, so we're pleased to be in that, and I'll report back to the next board meeting what I've learned through that, my membership on that committee. Lastly, you have in your... Lastly, you have in your library, you have the school calendar for next year. Several things, I think, you know, my usual pattern is to give you the calendar as a draft and then let you look at it until the next board meeting. I'm going to continue that. But we also do post it as a draft, so parents, really the biggest call I get, you know, other than are we having school in September, is what day are we starting? So parents like to see that and start planning, though. But I do want to say that this was put in, and we're waiting for some information from the state education department. If the Juneteenth holiday would fall, I'm trying to find out from the state education department if they're rearranging the Regents exam schedules. So we haven't seen the 2021 schedule at this point, so we probably will leave in a further adjustment to that calendar before July 1st. But you have, you have a basic idea what the calendar is there, and I'll be asking for you to approve it in, on July 1st. And we will post it on the website as a draft, and we make it clear that it's a draft until board approval. And that is all I have for tonight. Any questions?
I have a question about the school calendar.
Okay.
So the last few years, we've talked about reworking the school calendar so that there, so that a professional development day does not fall in the middle of the nicest listening, reading, and writing. And I was hopeful that this would finally be the year that we didn't have a professional development day that fell within that week, especially given how many DLS students we have.
Well, it's not a week, actually, Dr. Jacobowitz. It's about 24 days. There's a, it's not, it's not only a seven-day window. I mean, there's, there's like a 16-day window for the, for the administration of that. But let me go back to the dates on that, and, and we can talk about between now and July 1st. And if that's a change we have to make, we can do that.
Okay. I mean, I understand that there's a, that there's a window, and I know there's a window for, there are two steps. So there's just the speaking, and then there's the listening, reading, and writing. And I think my understanding is that having a professional development day, even in that, in that shorter window, actually was quite disruptive, and it's hard for them to get through everything. And so if we can avoid it, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Graduates will be, the seniors will be grad, the virtual graduation, they will officially be graduates as of June 26th.
Correct.
On July 17th, they will be marching across the stage and being given a cover for their diploma. But they will already have been graduates for three weeks.
Yes. So, so yeah, the virtual graduation is actually their graduation. And tomorrow, Monday, Jim and I will be recording, you know, our parts in the graduation ceremony, where we, where I certify the class and hand it over to Jim to, to then say the class is now graduates. So they, our graduates will be graduates next Friday night at 6 o'clock.
Now, how will that be, will that be livestreamed, or how is that?
No, it's not going to be livestreamed because it's, it's going to be, it's going to be recorded.
Okay.
So Jim and I will tape our oath tomorrow.
Monday.
Monday. Our, our part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, on the website at 5:00 PM on the 26th of June.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Catalino? Okay, we'll move on to the Board of Education section. The first topic is Teaching and Learning Committee, Dr. Jacobowitz.
Hi. All right, that's my dog, but I can't really unmute this because, hold on. I'm sorry. Busy around here, so I apologize for that. I was like, what, I can't do both things. Okay, so, so Teaching and Learning met last week, or the week before. We, so we had, we had two separate meetings. One, we had a first meeting to talk about the comprehensive school improvement plans, and then we had a follow-up meeting where we kind of got an update on things that have been happening in TNL over the past year and thoughts about what we're going to do moving forward. I'd like to separate those two because literally we will be here all night if I have to talk about both of those. So, Mr. Perna, can we put TNL back on the agenda for next, the next meeting also? And I'll do like TNL part two. And tonight, I'll just talk about the school improvement plans, which is going to take a while. Because that was a very full, two-hour-long meeting that I had to rush everybody through. But it's, you know, they're always full in their break. So at this meeting, as I said, we talked about the school improvement plans. Basically, what this is, is that we have schools in our district that are cited for low performance or low growth of certain groups of students. And those schools then have to develop plans about how they're going to improve the performance of those students. Those plans come to the Board of Ed, we approve them, and then they go to the state. So the first run of looking at those and thinking about those was at the TNL meeting that we had. So I'm going to kind of run through what those plans were about. There are two categories of improvement schools. One is called the comprehensive school improvement schools, and those are schools that have to focus on improving performance of all of their students. And then we have a targeted school improvement schools, and those are schools that just have to focus on targeted populations within their school community. So we have two comprehensive improvement schools, Miller and JFK. So these are schools that need to focus their plans on all of their students, their improvement plans on all their students. And then we had three targeted school improvement schools. Those were Crosby, Chambers, and Bailey, and they had to focus on specific subsets of students. So instead of going through each individual plan, which would take a long time, I'm going to summarize them and then can certainly ask any questions, and they can be available for everyone to look at. I know we had a lot of board members at the meeting, so I think many of you have seen these already and you've heard the conversation. So in all the cited schools, there's a focus on increasing the academic growth of students in math and ELA. So again, either the, all students or the targeted population. So, so the focus is on making sure that a certain percentage of students are making appropriate growth in those schools. And of course, the goal is for that percentage to increase each year. So some schools included goals specifically also in English language proficiency, even though in some cases this wasn't required, but they wanted to make sure that those students were also a focus, and they included that group. So schools were tackling this issue of academic growth in math and ELA in a number of ways. First was a focus on professional development. There was a lot of focus on peer-led professional development, so peer observation, sharing of best practice, mentoring, and peer support. And that would happen in the classroom, but also during staff meetings and during faculty meetings. There was some mention of specific instructional strategies and programs like multi-censoring instruction for reading, writing workshop, words their way. One school talked about creating an ethic and a culture of reading and writing within the school. There was conversation about vertical conversations among grade levels. So in faculty meetings and staff meetings, that teachers would talk about how the curriculum spirals up. There was mention of using data to inform instruction. That's something we've talked about for a long time. And then there was also talk about the use of online learning platforms. This was particularly at the middle school level, like iExcel, things, which is a math program, or News ELA for practice. All the schools also had goals around chronic absenteeism and, and increasing attendance. So schools are tackling this through. The use of the attendance workers, that's at the middle schools. The walking school bus, we're seeing that at elementary schools. We already have that in place in some of our schools. Attendance, thinking about attendance, there's also a focus on social and emotional learning, so building a positive school culture through restorative justice practices and community circles as a way to make school, you know, more welcoming and more engaging and have, take care of the emotional part of student learning. And then just some kind of logistical things like automated texts and phone calls home to say it's time to come to school. Then schools were also addressing issues that were raised in their, in the surveys that they gave out to parents and to students. So there were similar things that they wanted to focus on. So there were two things that really surfaced. One was bullying, and another was parent communication and involvement. So again, around issues of bullying, there's a focus on social, emotional learning, using peer mediation, giving kids more of a voice in the school. There's some discussion about clarifying the definition of bullying, especially for younger kids, so that we really are talking about the same thing. In terms of parent communication, there was a sense that now that everyone's used to teens, for the most part, that that actually may be a good tool for parent communication, that they could, that schools could set up a parent page, or teens, or, when I say teens, I mean middle school teams or high school teams. Or individual teachers could set up a parent page on, on teens, and then parents could access that. There was talk about communication to home, between home and school, like if there's been a change, or if there's been a change in grades, contacting parents, reaching out to parents. And also familiarizing new middle school parents with the different modes of communication and kind of the way things work at middle schools. So the plans overall seemed, I mean, there were great conversations, very engaged principals and school communities, and people really kind of digging their hands in and tackling some really tough issues and tough problems. There's a really good focus on social, emotional learning and creating more positive school environments, and, and a real conviction that that alone will, will go a long way towards, towards then creating positive outcomes in all of the areas. Let's see, the professional development, that includes peer learning and sharing among teachers, I think is really important, and the focus on some specific instructional strategies. We had some conversation about, I guess, concern about an overreliance on online platforms, which seems to be a little bit complicated at the middle schools, really just because there's such a time crunch and, and schedules are really tight. So there's this balance between using those programs, which are great for practice, but also making sure that children who are struggling really understand new concepts. So that is something that schools are really grappling with. Let's see. And also thinking about the schedule at the middle school and ways to break the schedule open a little bit, especially for fifth and sixth graders, and give more time to reading support and that. So that's kind of the summary of all of the plans put together. I know that we, that there, we have access to those plans. Camille, I don't know if you can send them to everyone or post them in the library so that everyone can see them. I know most of us have. But are there any questions or any comments from anyone who's in any of the meetings?
I, I.
Mrs. Scher?
I would just, oh, I would just like to say that I was very favorably impressed by the enthusiasm on the part of the principals and, and the wealth of information that they gave. And I, and it just seems so much more cohesive than it has in the past. And kudos, you, you kept it going, moving along. So I encourage everybody to read the reports. They were wonderful.
So we have to approve those plans before they're submitted to the state, don't we?
Yes.
To the board? So that will be in?
Yes. The board has to approve them, just in the way that you need.
July or August?
Yes, and so any other comments, and then I have to make a motion, correct?
I, I, I wanted to add, I'm on the committee, so I was in all the meetings for this year. And that being our last meeting for this year, I wanted, I wanted to really thank Dr. Jacobowitz for doing an outstanding job leading that committee through all of that data. I also wanted to thank John Boyd, Beth Bonville, and Dr. Feller Sella. The presentations at these meetings and the data and the drill down of the data was just outstanding. Really great information to prepare the board for the decisions we have to make. Just outstanding. Thank you, Rob.
Dr. Jacobowitz, I'd like to echo that. As an observer of that meeting, I was so impressed with the plans, with the way they were presented, with the, the whole collegial approach between buildings. They were, the principals mentioned, this is working in this other building, and we're trying this and, and things. And it's such more a group, you know, as one than, than we were when I was in the elementary school here. I just think they've come so far, and those administrators have worked very hard on getting us there. And you.
And Dr. Jacobowitz, you don't have to, that resolution is not for tonight, it's for July, for the July meeting, because you're still in, there's still a draft one.
Okay, yeah. Great. I didn't see it. So it'd be great if we could post those plans in the, in the library, then people can look through them. And if there are any other questions, we can talk about it some more at the next TNL report, which will be next, at the next meeting, because we always have more to talk about.
We'll have those in the library Monday for everyone to.
So that'll be in the library for the July 1st meeting, right?
Not on Monday.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Not on Monday.
Always with your synopsis of so much that happens at those meetings, and you really are able to just articulate so well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Well, there's a lot, and I try to do it justice, but I'm not sure that I do, so.
Yes, you do.
We try.
Okay. Any other comments on that topic? Policy Committee. Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you. Can you hear us? The Policy Committee met Friday, June 5th at 9:30. We had a full comportment of members, and we focused on the three policies that you see in your files for first reading tonight. 4-8-5-0, animals in the schools, 6-8-3-0, travel conference and expense, and 4-5-3-1, field trips and excursion. And there was a lot, this is, we have been talking about these policies for several months, and there's always such thoughtful discussion and revisions to try to make them as clear and usable as possible. So I want to thank everybody on the committee and both the board members and the administrators who serve on that committee, because it's always very productive conversation and very thoughtful. So tonight, we are offering you those three committee, those three policies for your reading pleasure and consideration. And so if you would please review them and make note of any questions or concerns you might have, so that you can bring them to my attention prior to the next meeting, so we're prepared for a good discussion if there are problems, or we will just vote to accept them at that time. We also did talk about whether or not the Policy Committee, excuse me, needed to address COVID responses in the fall. And of course, we don't know yet what the fall will bring, so we're going to just wait. And we feel that the changes that we have currently will cover us if we have to go into any kind of distance learning. But those decisions have not been made. And we were also asked to review the homeschooling policy regarding participation in extracurricular activities, which we discussed and felt we would, we are going to just leave it the way it is. So we're not recommending any changes to that. The, just to remind you, the school dress code is still on hold until the students return, because we really want the input. So that has just been tabled until the students are back in the high school in more of a conventional schedule, so that they can address those issues. Because right now, I think everybody's been swept. So, including all of us. So I don't think it matters. But that's the report. And so you have first readings. Any questions or concerns?
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Spicer?
I'm on that committee too. I don't know what committee I'm not on. But I want to say to, to the board and to all the people who are listening, Suzanne Jordan is a policy wonk. She loves this stuff, and she's great at explaining it. She took us through all of these details, a little, a little too much detail on the animal policy, but all the rest of it in, in great detail. And she helps us to understand how important, because policy drives all the things that we do. So I just, it's the end of the year. I just wanted to thank you, Suzanne, for, for the great job you did. Thank you.
Well, thank you, but I really need to thank my committee. I just have, you know, wonderful board members, and you, Stephen, and Herb, and Jim, and Dr. Catalino is really the wonk. He knows, he really knows how to get to the kernel of what the policy needs to be and what we have to focus on. And John Verge, of course, we could not do this without Mr. Verge, because he is in every rabbit hole, and he.
rabbit hole and he, he is doing the work, the work of the committee. I just sit there and nod and pretty much let everybody else do the work. But Alan Olson has also contributed so much. So whoever we have, we have made every effort to bring the people who are affected by these committee or policy decisions to the table. And I think that beginning of the year, we had a lot of success with that. And that's what we hope to do with the dress code, bringing kids to the table. So, and also with the eye towards equity in our policies and making sure, we have had these discussions about systemic racism and we're certainly looking at that in terms of our policies. So I just want to thank my committee, fabulous, and the whole board. I mean, I'm, I'm very proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just have to make sure that Dr. Collins gets set up early next week with her board, board docs and her district email.
I'm already on it.
Okay. So she'll be able to get all of these documents before the July 1st meeting. Okay. Next item on the agenda is board communication. I'm sort of indulging myself with this. On Monday, July, June 8th, I've early, I received an email with the subject, "Social Inequalities" from a student. And I'm going to read it. Hello, Mr. Shaughnessy. My name is Izzy Schulz. I am currently a fifth grade student at Bailey Middle School. I am writing to you in light of recent events in the world. Social inequalities and racism is a real issue in the world today. We learn a lot about history and slavery in school, but we don't always talk about the real world current issues. I want to be a part of the change, but I can't do it alone. I want my black friends and classmates to know that I don't totally understand what they go through, but I stand with them. I believe my peers and I can change the future, help keep racism in the past. I'm hoping that when we get back to school, we will have more chances to do this. I know with COVID things, I know with COVID, things will be different when we return. I know it can be a tough thing to talk about, but by not talking about it, we add to the problems. I was thinking some assemblies were peaceful ways for us kids to educate ourselves and also express and talk about how we are feeling. Thank you for reading my email. Izzy Schulz.
I think that was a wonderful letter from that young lady.
I was just blown away. And I was just, you know, especially a student, a fifth grade student, and I just was just exceptionally impressed by it. And I later learned that it was an assignment from one of her teachers to write a letter to a community leader about the George Floyd murder. So my congratulations goes to Izzy for her letter and to her teacher for the assignment. It is gratifying that our students are given an opportunity to think about social justice and how to advance it in our society.
Yeah, I thought that was very impressive too. And it gives us hope for, for the future. I think that our young people, as they get the facts and the information, they're going to help change our world. And so I was very appreciative of what the young lady had to say.
And I must congratulate her parents too, because her, her parents definitely, they, they need to be commended for bringing up a great child there.
Yes, actually, I, I did write, I did write back to her twice, once just responding to her email. And then I asked her to, for her, for her parents to give me permission to read it in public here. And her mother responded and said she was very, they were very proud of her.
It's such a, such a beautiful and wonderful thing to say. If it wasn't for the current pandemic, right, I think I would take that whole family to dinner. Such a beautiful thing. And, and it gives us all hope. And it's the reason why we all became board members, to lift up our whole community and, and to forward exactly what that little girl is talking about. It's beautiful. Thank you for sharing.
And she's also really identifying school as a place where she can be an activist and a place where she can make change herself and her peers. And so I hope that she is able to actualize that through this, through school and with the staff at Bailey. I'm confident that, she's at Bailey, right?
Yes.
I'm confident that, that they will be able to. And then it could be, you know, I'm imagining more than just an after-school club, but something that's really integrated into the work, as this teacher did, that kids do every day and that social justice becomes part of how we teach our kids. And she's really identifying and opening a space for that.
And I'm sure, I know that there are other students at her, at her level that are capable of the same expression of concern and, and social justice. So it just really makes me aware of, and proud to be a part of this school district. So the next item on the agenda is a board recognition. And I would like to turn this over to Mrs. Shear.
Oh, thank you. I'm getting a message, my battery is low. Let me plug it in, quick.
While, while she's plugging in the phone, I thought I would add something. The fact that a little girl in one of our schools would write a letter like that tells us all that we're not in a moment, we're in a movement. It's a very beautiful thing happening across our whole country and just wonderful to see.
Yes, I thought that we have another threat of Thunberg rising through our ranks.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay.
I didn't want it to cock out in the middle of this. So Resolution 2019, uh-oh, what happened?
We can see, everything is fine.
You're good.
Okay. Well, I couldn't see you. BOE 78. Whereas Reverend James Childs Sr. has been a true servant leader on the Kingston City School District Board of Education for four consecutive terms, diligently working as both an officer and active member of every committee on which he has participated. And whereas he has powerfully advocated for diversity and cultural responsiveness in our hiring and in shaping our district's individual school environments. And whereas he has been instrumental in helping to forge strong community partnerships and has been a tireless proponent of restorative practices in our schools. And whereas Reverend Childs has been a true champion of equity and fairness, always thoughtful and compassionate, wise and respected, calm in even the most trying times, and has been an individual who continuously strives to make his community more beautiful than he found it. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Kingston City School District Board of Education expresses deep gratitude for his service and hopes that our paths will continue to intersect with his as he will be most sorely missed. And let it be further resolved that the board wishes to present him with a desk clock engraved as follows. Reverend James Childs Sr., in recognition of your dedication and leadership, Kingston City School District Board of Education, 2008 through 2020.
May I have a second on that resolution?
I'm, I'm speechless. My daughter just brought over the copy of the resolution. I don't know how you pull this off. And also the clock, and I really appreciate, you know, it has been a most rewarding privilege to work with each of you, as we have worked to make our district the best they can be for all of our children. And I just think you're an amazing team and you give so unselfishly of your time and your talent and all, for all of our students. And it's been just a joy to work with you. The only thing I guess that I would really say is that I, I think when I reflect upon all the things that, that have happened, you know, within our district and I look at and I tell everybody that one of the best decisions we made was when we hired our superintendent to be our educational leader for the district. And he hasn't disappointed us at all. And, and then we've made so many other decisions, and you wouldn't know what they are, I won't go over it. But I really think that sometimes the board needs to stop and, because we're always moving forward, but sometimes you need to stop and just say, let's reflect upon what has been accomplished. This has been an amazing team and, and you guys are wonderful. I'm going to miss you, but I'm glad to move on to another sphere of maybe playing some golf and, and relaxing and, and reading in the paper about what you're doing. And maybe even coming and complaining about you every now and then.
Charles, this is Michael. I would like to say that it's been a pleasure and honor to working with you for the last nine years, moving together. We have always been on the same page, we had agreed on a lot of things. Maybe we had points of disagreement about something, but I would like to say thank for your service and good luck, whatever you're going to do next. God bless.
Thank you.
Reverend Childs, it's Steve Spicer. And I would echo what James Michael just said. Maybe we haven't always been on the same page, but when I found out what page you were on, I got on that page. God bless you and, and, and God has blessed all of us for the great work you've done on this board. You've left behind great works, great works, all a testament to your fortitude and brilliance and kindness and dedication. Thank you, sir.
I would like to say I so much appreciated your wise counsel when we worked together as a team, as officers, always when we were working together with the board. But it was, it was really good to be your partner for four years. So I have to thank you for that. And you've left us with a legacy that we have to carry forward now into the future. You've started so many good things. So I want to thank you for that.
Well, you know how I feel about you, Nora. I think you're a very special person and you have, you're a good leader and appreciate that. And you're continuing to do great work. Again, you know, let's not get too emotional here, let's stop this. But again, I appreciate really all of you. And I think, I boast about it all the time. I've seen a lot of school boards and even before in Kingston, there, there were boards and they were, they were dysfunctional. And everybody came in with their little agenda and they weren't concerned about the kids. But I always say that this community, and I think they're recognizing it, has a board that's really interested in improving the life of our children. And, and this has just been great. And so when you look around and see that new high school and see the work that's done in every building to make them all good and when you see the progress that's made, it is just overwhelming. We haven't done everything that needs to be done, but boy, we're really on the way of, of doing that. And again, I appreciate Dr. Pedalino and, and I call him Dr. Verge too, but John, you just tremendous, you've got just tremendously leaders there. So as I said, let's, let's cut this off. I, I'm going to miss you guys, but I'm going to still be around. God bless.
Well, thank you, Reverend Childs.
Thank you, Reverend Childs. I would like to say that I've served with you your 12 years on the board and it's been a, a real pleasure to know you. And you've made contributions to the Board of Education, just as you've made many contributions to the community in a lot of different areas for many, many, many years. And I look forward to continuing to know you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a mo, we have a motion.
I didn't catch a motion.
The second?
The motion was, the motion was Norris.
Norris, okay.
Second. I second.
Okay. So we've had the discussion.
We all seconded.
We all seconded.
We all seconded. And so I'll call for the vote. All in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye, indeed.
Indeed. And opposed, nay? I don't expect to hear any. Or extensions. Unanimously adopted. Thank you very much, Reverend Childs.
Again, thank you all.
Stay well.
Yes. Well, he's going to stay in the meeting too.
Yes.
We've got a second. I think you get adjourned tonight. Reverend Childs, you kept being adjourned.
Is there another resolution?
Yes, there is.
Later on, we're at the consent.
Now we're at the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that any board member would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Are there any questions or comments about any of the items on the consent agenda? I would like to say we are, we, one of the items on the consent agenda is a, is a long list of teachers and staff members who are being granted tenure this evening. I'd like to congratulate all of them. It's a long name, long list to read. And we will be having a recognition ceremony for them in September. So all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
I don't have a motion.
Oh, we don't? Oh. We need a motion. Motion for the consent agenda? So moved?
Second.
So Mr. Spicer and Mr. Michael?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, now I can ask for, call the question, is that in order? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, unanimously adopted. Somehow I got confused with this landscape.
Do you want this one, sir?
No, I got it. Board of Education.
No, all business, is there any all business?
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Just, I want to report something, that I have attended the Kingston Parks Recreation Commission meeting last June 4th.
Okay.
And our fellow Reverend Charles, at the last minute, he mentioned about people interacting at the stadium.
Yes.
And the fact that the city has no assigned person at the stadium yet. And as a matter of fact, today, the mayor announced that all the parks and playgrounds will be open today and there still will be no attendees at the stadium. I got a call from Mrs. Timber. So I don't know with the new guidelines, how the people will be interacting, you know, keeping the social distance or what in mass, I guess it's all, how could they do it?
I don't know what's causing that.
Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's all I wanted to report about the stadium.
When are they, have they led any contracts for the renovation that they plan?
Well, everything was... Well, everything was pushed back because of the COVID and evidently the Andrade Park is supposed to be opening up July 1st, but I guess it's not gonna happen. So definitely put back the rest of the work to be done at the stadium. So hopefully it will not be interfering anything with the future events at the stadium, so.
Okay. Any other all business? Thank you, Mr. Michael, on that report.
Welcome.
Any other old business? New business? I believe Mr. Spicer has a resolution that he wants to for us to consider. Mr. Spicer?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so before I read our our resolution, before I read our resolution, I wanted to I would like to share a story many African-American families tell. When you bake a cake, if you forget to put sugar in it, sprinkling sugar on top of it won't make it taste any better. When you build a country without safety, justice, equal opportunity, and equal access for all, small acts can't solve these problems of historic institutional racism. Everyone must be bold now. If we miss this moment, we miss the entire movement. Equity isn't easy and equitable choices can make some of us uncomfortable, but we must begin now to set an example for our children and grandchildren that this is the only path to the harmonious future they deserve. I believe this nation and our community can reach the pinnacles of the promises of democracy, but we can only get there together. Together or not at all. And now it is my honor to read the Kingston City School Board District's truly collaboratively written anti-racism resolution, 2019-BOE77. Whereas the Kingston City School District wishes to honor the memory of George Floyd and all of those individuals who we have lost to police brutality and whereas we honor their memory best by faithfully serving our communities of color and standing against all impediments of prejudice and racism and whereas we recognize our role in addressing social inequities in the world, country, and our own school district, and we pledge to explore ways to ensure and increase equity in the Kingston City School District and we will use all of our means toward creating a true truly inclusive environment. And whereas we recognize the need and responsibility to support community efforts to eliminate racial disproportionality and increase the practice of guardianship in our civil institutions and criminal justice systems, now therefore be it resolved that the Kingston City School District Board of Education supports those initiatives within our school system and community that will end systemic racism and provide equal opportunity and equal justice for all.
I second that. Can I just start? Say something. I just want to thank Stephen for bringing this to the board because it was, as he said, a moment. And I think we've worked very hard in many different ways to try to to fight against the systemic racism that we know is there and the disproportionality. And I think that recognizing it was the beginning, I think that the book studies that have been brought to the board have certainly been helpful and in our own growth, but it was so important, I thought that Stephen brought this to us and I'm so impressed that the entire board contributed and made it so pitch perfect so that it would really reflect what the true spirit was behind it and also be purposeful in it, you know, and intentional. So I want to thank you, Stephen, and the rest of the board. I'm so proud to be part of it.
I'd like to thank Steve too for putting this together and I sort of sat on the sideline other than encouraging him to do that. I didn't have anything to do with putting it together because I felt that it was a board thing to do and I was really proud of the board and getting behind this and making it even greater than what it started out. And it's appropriate that it's being done on Juneteenth Day, a day of jubilee, a day of celebration, a day of great expectation. And I really appreciate all of you and I believe that as long as we care, and I was on a section of of celebration today and there was a speaker and I'd like to send that over to you all and you might want to listen to it, but he did a tremendous job of saying, what should we do? And he says, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, I'm gonna tell you this, all you gotta do is care. And I think we've got a caring board and you've demonstrated that and you continue to do that and I just expect even greater things from the Kingston City School District.
Mr. Spicer, this is Michael here. I would like to repeat that your words that you said, the moment, historically through the years, people revolted against oppression for freedom and they had always seized the moment and that's what it is, that moment, you seize the moment and you start what you're supposed to do. And today is the moment to speak up and do something about it. So this is our response as a board members, as a community, to answer that something must be done.
And lastly, I wanted to say Reverend Charles is correct because he saw the original draft of this and then it went out to all the board members for them to take a look and almost every board member changed something, added something, sharpened it all up so that we have a beautiful message of support for our whole community. And I I I really do want to add, you people are very different. You're very different and Reverend Charles is right, this is a beautiful collective of people. I'm so honored to work with you. Nobody said, Steve, this isn't the time for this. Everybody said it's a really good message and it's the right time and everybody pitched in so that every jot, every letter, every grammatical piece, every point is as sharp as we can make it. I'm I am I'm just floating, I'm immensely proud of us all, just so proud. Thank you so much, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you need a motion? Does somebody?
We have a motion in a second, so is there any other comments? I would like to say that we've made progress in recent years in addressing these issues and I think that there's a lot, a lot long, a lot further way to go and I hope to just let the community know that we take it seriously and are dedicated to making even more, much more progress than we have in the past in this area. So if there's no further comments, could I ask for a roll call, please?
Dr. Jacobowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Reverend Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Ms. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Spicer?
We've got unanimously adopted, nine to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Mr. Shaughnessy, now that we've passed the resolution, can I make another comment?
Sure.
So now that we've passed this resolution, which I'm not surprised that it passed, I would like each of us to think about ways that we can enact it, very concrete ways that we can make good on this pledge that we've just made to each other and to our community. And I'd like to ask us to think about that in a very concrete way and then bring those ideas with us to our next meeting so that we can have a conversation in very specific terms about how we want to actualize the resolution that we just passed.
Love that, thank you Reverend.
I agree with that and we'll.
You're just all wonderful.
Carry that forward.
I mean, I know that we we've done some really good work around the book studies and we could continue, that could be something that we continue. We've had conversations in the past about security guards and SROs in our schools and maybe that should come back on the table. So I'd just like us to think about concrete things that we would like to do to be able to make this resolution, to make good on our pledge and make this resolution really
Okay, thank you for that suggestion. I think it's a very good and appropriate suggestion for us to to work on and there is a lot of work to do on this. And so our next meeting is is not too late to start. Is there any other new business?
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Yes, Mr. Michael?
This is like a business, I just want to make a comment and suggestion. I meant to say this last at the last meeting, but I forgot it. In our agenda, it states at the meeting itself at Mahar School, but it's not. I'm at home enjoying my freedom here, so I would like to have something stated on the agenda that this meeting is held virtually for the sake of history and facts that went out of Mahar School. So I would like to say this somewhere, that everybody's at home, more than that.
Yes, except for a few of us here.
I don't know, Mr. Spicer is nervous. Oh, man.
And actually, so there's been a suggestion that we will be in stage?
Still stage.
Three?
Phase three until the 8th of July where we'll go into phase four.
And so stage three is groups of?
The the latest government governor's executive order is that we can have inside groups of up to 25 people.
So we could start our July, we could have our July 1st meeting in person here at the Seoni Boardroom at Mahar School and administrative offices if everyone is comfortable with And we have we have 10 days, 12, 14 days, 12 days to consider that. So I'll do a, we'll do a poll before the next meeting to see if that's appropriate and if everyone is comfortable with it.
Mr. Shaughnessy, are you saying that to say our July meeting would be in person?
Well, the July 1st meeting could be in person under the guide, under the New York State guidelines for phase three.
Do they require distancing and masks?
Yes.
I think they do.
Yes.
Is that big enough for social distancing? I mean, we can't even all sit at that table.
No. I I would say if only the board, that we could probably spread out with masks, but I don't see 25 people being able to distance in that room.
So we'll, if I can jump in?
Yeah, sure.
So we'll get more specifics, Camila and I will, and then we'll send it out to everyone and you can all weigh in and we can make a decision between, like I said, we have 12 days to figure that out so we can make a decision and whatever the, you know, the majority of the board is comfortable with is what we'll do.
Okay. Are there any other board announcements, board member announcements?
I would say, I I just have one quick announcement. I mean, I wasn't able to come to the senior sendoff. I I saw the videos and I saw the pictures and it just made me weep, it just was so beautiful and I'm so proud of the high school community for putting that together and it was it was just really lovely. I also saw a lot of videos of the Graves Moving Up Ceremony that happened yesterday because I was, you know, I'm on that side of town and that also was beautiful, very different from anything I'd ever seen, but just lovely and the perfect sentiment and it was just really well done and a and a true celebration. So I'm impressed with our schools and the creativity of our teachers and our administrators and the ways that we're accommodating the celebration of our students at this moment.
I'd like to echo that, Robin, and I also think that in some ways, I've heard sentiments that people would like to continue these new kinds of celebrations because they have found them so poignant, I think.
Yeah, and poignant is a good word.
Yeah, so I think that it would be interesting to see if there's a hybrid. Hopefully, everybody's out of the pandemic by next spring, but it would be interesting to see what stays, just like there will be distance learning that stays in certain respects. So it's it's interesting, I agree. I think it was very poignant by the law.
And I agree. I think that maybe we've established some new ways of celebration that we'll continue to utilize moving into the future. Today with the teacher retirees, it was lovely to have the pictures with their own words as they were retiring and they've never really had an opportunity, you know, we're moving through the ceremony in person, that was great. And, you know, people can look at it at their leisure, so I I I think that was wonderful.
Yes, I don't think we're going to go back to normal, we're going to go forward to a new to a new way of doing things, improved way of doing things.
But with every new thing we have, we're gonna take an old thing away. This isn't the state education department where we just put new on top of old.
We have to limit our mandates. We entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of history of a of a particular employee, employment history of an employee. And we will, can I have that motion? And we'll take a moment to have a break.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And there will not be any action coming out of this executive session. And so and since Dr. Collins is not yet a board member, we'll have to we'll have to let you sign off and enjoy the rest of your Friday evening.
I will leave, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.